Welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach on Tuesday, April 5th, 2022. It's a good day. Governor Ross, Councilman Costner, he's absolutely, Councilman Bento.
President.
President Trust.
Here.
President McQuaddis.
Present.
The Reverend of the State of the President is Senator Senator John McCain and Corporation Council of Chicago is long-sitting to the flag.
Councilman Bendo, please sit first. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the free republic, to the position of stand on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Shout out, we have a report from Vice President Trusten.
Thank you, I wouldn't call it a report, but...
An update.
An update. We met at the Girl Scout this week, and we did a mock city council, and I wanted to let you know that we are bringing excellent, smart, intelligent, witty young women to host their grand proposal. And my second question. If you think first, the National Flood Insurance Policy went into effect, please check your flood insurance, talk to your agent, and ensure that you're getting a CRS if you have N F Y P. You can email us, you still have N F Y P unless you have your own project, or write your own for W Y O. If you have any questions, please email me, or give me a call, and I'm happy to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. At this time, I defer to you, Donna, for the City Manager's Report.
Good evening, everyone. Our City Manager's Report today is going to be over finances, so we have a representative from CMA, Financial Advisors, Tom Guzakis. Hopefully, I said that right. And he's going to go over, it's a brief, just an update of where we are as far as finances, and any of you joining him, and we'll pick questions about that. And the PowerPoint will be on the website if it's not there already.
Good evening, everyone. Tom Guzakis, Assistant Vice President with Capital Markets Advisors. We are the independent municipal advisor to the city. We also serve as the city's strategic consultant with some operational items, so we work very closely with the city manager and the city controller to assist the city. I've been asked to give a brief update regarding some financial matters in light of a few recent positive developments regarding the city's finances. Next slide. So, a few things have changed in recent months, a few updates from some independent, objective third parties that show some positive improvements to the city's finances, that show that the city's trending in the right direction. The first regards New York State's Fiscal Stress Monitoring System. This is a report that's put out by the State Controller's Office each year in regards to the city's annual update document or their unaudited financial statements, basically indicating how much financial stress the city or any municipality might be under. And really, it's scored to determine how likely a municipality is to be able to meet their budgetary needs, to have enough revenue to meet its expenditures in a given fiscal year. So, if you see that this left-hand corner of this box, over the past two years, the city has had a fiscal stress score of eighty-five in 2019 and seventy-seven in 2020, which equates to a significant fiscal stress. So, in this case, a higher number is a more stressed local government. Based on the city's 2021 A U D, which was sent to the state a few months ago, they gave the city a score of forty-five, a significant improvement, and which put them in the susceptible fiscal stress score. So, the city was able to move up two categories essentially in this past fiscal year, which is a sizable improvement, and a big reason for that is the improvement in the city's bond balance for 2021, better budgeting practices, things of that nature that have led the State Controller's Office to improve what they see as the stress on the city's finances. Excellent.
I'm sorry, Tom, could you just repeat that again? I heard very well. Can I repeat that one more time?
The city is definitely trending in the right direction.
Thank you so much. And Tom, is that as of fiscal year June 30th, 2021?
That's correct.
Over nine months ago.
Correct. So, that's the most recent financial, not modern financial statement, but the most recent report that was put together by the city.
Thank you.
So, the second indicator that has shown some improvement in recent months goes back to the bond rating of the city. So, this is done in conjunction with any bond or note issuance for capital projects that the city does. Moody's Investor Service, one of the three main credit rating agencies, puts out a report for the city in conjunction with these bond offerings that ascertain the willingness and ability of the city to meet its debt obligations. So, back in August of 2020, the city was given a rating of B double A to, I'm going to be, with a negative outlook. So, B double A is unfortunately the lowest investment grade rating that local governments can receive, with two being in the middle of that tier. The negative outlook speaks to Moody's expectation over the coming two years of where they see the city's finances going. So, it's on the lower side of the credit rating scale, and at that time, Moody's expected things to get worse essentially. In July of 2021, Moody's further downgraded the city to B double A three, which is the lowest investment grade rating category. So, any further deterioration in the credit rating would have led to what's called a sub-investment grade rating, and that would have severely impacted the city's suite of investors and significantly raised the interest rates on any future debt offerings. They also assigned a negative outlook to that rating, meaning they expected things to further deteriorate in the next couple of two years. However, on this past February, Moody's revised that outlook from negative to positive. So, they didn't change the actual rating on bonds, but they did revise their outlook, meaning that instead of them viewing the next two years as more negatives, more bad news to come, they viewed it as the city had turned a critical corner and was trending in a more positive direction. So, that positive outlook means they would expect the rating to rise in the coming two years instead of fall, which is quite a big deal, especially to go from negative to positive instead of from negative to stable, was a pretty significant jump. And a lot of that, they specifically cited the city's conservative budgeting in that report, which is always nice to see. Next slide. So, a big factor that's led to these recent changes and improvements is the city's bond balance levels over the past few years. You'll see back in 2015, the city had a good-sized bond balance of about twenty-four million, and this is across all funds, the general, water, sewer, all major funds in the city. However, by 2019, that had deteriorated to a negative level, which certainly contributed to the high fiscal stress scores to the poor credit ratings. However, over the past two fiscal years, 2020 and 2021, that has rebounded significantly and is now over thirty-six million. Excellent. Here we have a breakdown of the various funds for the most recent 2021 data. This is preliminary, so then it's subject to change, but you can see especially in the general fund, especially coming from a negative position just two years ago, being able to have a bond balance of six and a half million for the general fund, and specifically three and a half million of unassigned bond balance is a significant improvement. Excellent. And here you can see a trend of specifically that general fund, bond balance level, which in 2019 almost reached zero, was just two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, and has since rebounded to six and a half million for the past fiscal year.
You do me a favor, go back to the 2021 composition of various funds. Okay, what's important for everybody to see is that the total...
Next slide. I think she's talking about...
...composition of various funds. Okay, so what is important for everybody to see is that our fund balance overall is thirty-six point eight billion dollars, but it's made up of all the different funds. And if you look on the left side, you have non-dispendable, restricted, assigned, and unassigned. The bulk of that thirty-six million really is in capital projects, and capital projects is in a restricted fund, which means that that twenty-three million that is at the bottom line of capital projects, that's the only thing that twenty-three million can be spent on, is capital projects. We have one point one million in FEMA, it can only be spent on FEMA projects. So, I don't want people to think that, wow, they're flushed with cash. That is not the case. Where we look at as far as our general operating budget is in the general fund, where we have six point five million, however, we have not met government standards of how much we're supposed to have in our fund balance to operate a city. So, I just wanted to point that out, so nobody thought that when they saw the thirty-six million, oh, wow, they're really are flushing cash. No, twenty-three point seven of that million plus FEMA and the non-governmental, non-major governmental, those are restricted funds, and we can't use those for anything except for what they were borrowed for.
That's right. And the general fund, unassigned fund balance, as you mentioned, is still less than the city's adopted fund balance policy, which states there should be at least five percent of the previous year's expenditures in unassigned fund balance. Currently, at this three and a half million dollar level, I believe it's just shot four percent, and would need an additional one point three million or so to reach that five percent level.
So, back in, what was it? At one point, the government, the general fund, a couple of years ago, only had two-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand dollars in the general fund, and in two years, it's grown to six point five.
Since you've been here. So, Tom, what is the significance of a fund balance? Does every municipality have to have a fund balance that's in the positive?
It's absolutely a positive. It's a rainy day fund. It's there in case there are any unexpected expenses, any unforeseen circumstances that require additional monies to be spent. Every municipality should certainly have a fund balance. It's a big reason why the city adopted a formal fund balance policy, to ensure that that level of risk is being avoided.
Does that having a fund balance affect the interest rates at which we can borrow?
It affects your credit rating, which directly affects your interest rates.
Thank you.
Yep, next slide. So, that wraps it up for me, just a few notes to leave, I can leave you with. Obviously, as we showed, there were a few positive indicators that have been turning in the city's favor. Things are trending in the right direction regarding management, budget, and the finances in general, but there's certainly still more work to be done, but the team that you have is doing an excellent job.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions for the council? Mr. Bendo?
Can I just say something? You know, as the person who's been sitting up here along this, just over four years now, when I got on the city council, I guess I'll keep this G-rated since we're a family show, our city's finances were a crap show. They were, budgeting was a big numbers up process, and we were the most financially distressed municipality in the entire state of New York, number one, the one list you didn't want to be number one on. And in two years, two years, we are, if this holds up, one-tenth of a point away from coming off the list entirely. That doesn't happen some magic powder or wave your hand and it just happens. That happens because the people sitting up here, the people who work in this building, the people who work in other buildings and out in the field across the city have worked their tails off for the last two years to turn this city around. This has not been an easy process, but this is what happens when you have ethical people working that will tackle the difficult problems and make the difficult decisions to fix those difficult problems. There's people out there right now that would love to go back to the way the city used to be run. There's people who probably work in this building that would like to go back to the way it used to be run, when we had patronage galore and illegal payouts and things like that. And right now, it's probably people sitting at home, watching online, who are trying to figure out how to go spend this and do their perpetual complaining online about the city. And, you know, to be honest, I got two words for those people, and they ain't happy birthday. You know, but the simple fact is, this is what happens when people put in the work to tackle the difficult problems. Are we done? Heck no. Well, we are clearly moving in the right direction. And as much as people may like to complain, the simple fact is, problems are yet to be dealt with, and we're making this city a better place. And I just think that that needs to be stated because, you know, like, we got a lot of professional complainers in this, in the city, and this is just, this is great news, and this took a lot of work to get there, and the people that made this happen deserve the credit. It's all the people who work for the city and are here trying to do a better job for you, the residents. So, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
And personally, I'd just, I see former Councilman Mike DeLorean here as well, and he is part of this great group of examples.
I'm also happy to report that I met with, or that I saw New York State Commissioner Danapoli in person this Sunday, and he is, again, extremely pleased with our performance and supportive of us, and knows that we have still a long road to go, but he is behind us. So, I want to make sure that the public knows that we have support in Albany from the Department of Athletics. So, again, thank you, everyone, for that presentation. It was very informative. It really also put things in perspective, because every day when you're dealing with these challenges, you get a little down, but so it was good to really put it in perspective. With that, we'll move on to your agenda.
Nope. More report?
I have one other person that's...
Sorry.
John McAllister's going to give a brief update.
Thank you, everybody. City Manager's just asked that I give brief updates on a couple of items. Number one, thanks to County Executive Blain and Legislature Ford. About a month ago, the city was in receipt of a large supply of COVID-19 test kits. Those test kits are now available for anyone in the city to pick up down the stairages in City Hall, at the rec center, or at the Kohlway Senior Center. They do not expire for a couple of months, but we want to make sure that we get them all in the hands of everybody that needs it before they do expire. So, if there's any nonprofits, houses of worship, companies out there that would like to pick up more than just a couple, and so that they can give to their congregation or constituents, call the City Manager's Office, 705-7202, and we'd be happy to order to deliver or pick up for you. Number two, the annual, and I'm not even sure what annual it is, it's like forty-seventh or ninety-eighth or one-hundred-and-fifty-second annual Easter event. Is this Sunday? Sixty? Sixty. It takes place on the rec fields. Advanced registration is required. You can do that at the rec center, at the front desk of the rec center. It starts at nine AM, it goes till one PM. It goes off in different places depending on the age of the kids, but the key message here is you need to register in advance, you cannot just show up the day of. So, if you've got kids interested, go sign up at the rec. Number three, out of total number four, is we are looking at next Wednesday at seven PM at having a working session on parking meters, which will probably be the last working session before we go to a formal council meeting for a vote on authorization for the vendor. So, I won't get into details, but now that I want to flag it for everybody, it's still canceled, and it's not set, it's still open, and that's the date that we're looking at. And last, but not least, the Director of Planning and Economic Development, Pat Amorn, and myself, along with our Planning Advisory Board, have been working with a consultant to get a moment in progress on updating the city's comprehensive plan. We are collectively pleased to announce that later on this week, there will be a public survey that will start to push out, that will be the first initial sort of public input component of that. There will also be input sessions and other working meetings throughout the course of the process, but the first visible and tangible public engagement portion is going to be an online website and an online survey that we will ask a whole view to fill out and a whole view to share with your friends, so that we can make sure we get a holistic and robust input from our residents in terms of what the future of our city should look like. With that, it is Matt Ammon.
Thank you, City Manager Gabe.
I have a regular account. Ninety-one, agreeable minutes, pardon me, March fifteenth, 2022. Governor Ross.
I just got two minor typo corrections. On page three, the second one, all the way to the right, where it says in February, there's a straight I, letter I there. And on page four, at the bottom, next to the last paragraph, it says MC period McNally, it's always supposed to be Mr., MR. And that's it.
Did you make a motion?
Oh, I'll make a motion for those two checklists.
Second?
I will.
Is that realistic?
Yes.
Councilman Bendo?
Yes.
As President Trusten?
Yes.
President McQuaddis?
Yes.
I am too, as I mentioned, advising the City Manager to institute a contract for on-call sewer maintenance services with sole sponsor.
I'm Joe Chris, Commissioner of Public Works. This is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter a contract with a sole bidder for on-call sewer maintenance services contract. The sole bidder was National Water Maintenance at one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-and-sixty dollars. The contract is utilized specifically for intelligent inspection, cleaning, and installation of cure-to-place liners before it's too dirty with sanitary sewer or storm sewer tanks. Cure-to-place liners is a trenchless technology, which utilizes a substitute for the traditional sanitary sewer replacement whereby rows excavated and new sanitary pipes installed. Cure-to-place technology involves the cleaning of an existing sewer line, performing a camera inspection to determine if the line is candid for cure-to-place lining, and ultimately lining the entire sewer with a resin flexible tube that's pulled through the pipe and expanded to be tightened against the pipeline by using pressure and heat. It's typically a lachy rhythm on the rectal excavation, and this cannot be performed in cast by a talented sanitary sewer staff. The funding is available in the Capital Watch for this exercise, and this contract that I were using is the previous contract that had this contract. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the council? Mr. Last Day?
A couple of, Tom? Sure. How much would a camera like that, if we got something like that, what would it cost us?
I don't know, honestly. But the camera inspection is just one part of the process. You have to do camera inspection and cleaning of the line.
No, no, I'm just, just the fact that we can't inspect our own pipes, you know, just wondering, you know, if that's a worthwhile investment?
It would be a great investment, absolutely. To be able to have the technology.
Could we mind that waiting in the course?
Absolutely.
All right. And again, one bit that always bothers me.
And that's why when I said sole bidder, I said that loudly.
It's just, I wish there were another way.
In this case, this is a unique technology, it's not a lot of companies that actually do it, and that's probably why we don't care.
And hopefully, much of the camera tech, so that we won't need this ever again.
We absolutely will not need this, hopefully, as of September two thousand and twenty-five, we will not need this.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Bendo?
Yeah, I guess, well, two things, I guess we want to comment on that question. I just want, I want people to understand what this is, that this is a potential game-changer in terms of our whole pipe infrastructure. What this is essentially doing right now, and we have to replace a pipe, we have to dig up the street, we have to pull out the pipe, replace the pipe, fill it back in, repatch the street, which we all know bleeds the potholes and things like that. What this is essentially doing is, think about it, is you're sending a plastic balloon down the old pipe that sticks to the walls, and then that, the skin of that balloon hardens and becomes a brand-new pipe without digging anything up. You're blowing it down the line. So, this is a potential game changer in how we fix our pipes. This technology's been used, and I'm sorry, I'm married by engineering. This technology's been used in the oil, gas, water industries all over the world for years. I was pushing Joe's predecessor to do this several years ago, to start filling it. This is the potential to be able to do a lot of the work on our pipes. My question is, one-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, I know I'm asking the one-hundred-and-thirty-nine, it depends on the size of the line, the condition, all that other stuff, but how much work do we think we could get done for that amount?
Unfortunately, to date, we haven't had a lot of success with cure-to-place technology.
That's because we're trying to go to the past and collapse lines, which means that...
Well, what happened, like, for example, at the intersection of Wooddale and Wall, and that's a collage we had last year, we did try to, we did a TV inspection, but it wasn't, again, it wasn't candid. Once it's collapsed, it's not candid. We had the same problem on Park Hill between Grand and New York. Unfortunately, it wasn't candid. So, you know, it's not ideal for every situation, it's like having a toolbox, you know, option, you know, when you do have a problem. You're not going to, for one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand dollars, you're not going to get a lot of pipe. Just for example, if it's two-hundred linear feet between manholes, it might be fifty dollars a linear foot to the line versus a thousand dollars a linear foot to actually excavate. So, if you keep it in that perspective, it's...
So, if we haven't, if we don't use the service for repair purposes, have we prioritized where in the city, as far as preventive maintenance, where we might go reline some of the lines, if there's money left, you know, towards the tail end of the contract that we haven't...
Yeah, I've had discussions with the sanitary sewer department, and they have a couple of locations in my book for the new situation. Do you really want to use it? It's just as, we really haven't had good situations where we can actually use this technology. What it is, it's a great technology.
Joe, something that John said, the preventive maintenance, can, is there a way we can tell what's subject to collapse, or, you know, I think usually...
money left, you know, towards the tail end of the contract and that we haven't?
Yeah, I've had discussions with the sanitary sewer department, and they have a couple of locations in my books for the new situation. Do you really want to use it? It's just as, we really haven't had good situations where we can actually use this technology. What it is, it's a great technology.
Right.
Joe, something that John said, the preventative maintenance, can, is there a way we can tell what's subject to collapse, or, you know, I think we usually were surprised by the collapses.
Not really. I mean, we have a system that's probably, you know, maybe 100 years old. I use a perfect example, Ford Street, which was chronic problem for many years, was one of the ones that we recently had to totally replace. There's just, there's really no way to tell. It's just a...
With the camera, would, can you turn that?
Yeah, oh yeah, you can tell with the camera. But you have to do cleaning first, and then you have to do intelligent inspection.
Sounds like steps, if you ask me that.
Absolutely. Yeah, sort of, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the council members? Please let me know. Okay, any questions from the public? Mr. Grayton?
So I just wanted to jump onto what John said.
Mr. Grayton just to the record.
Oh, sorry, Dan Grayton, we won't mention. John, this is a continuation of an existing contract, I believe.
Well, it's the same contract.
Same contract.
Contract expired, and we put it out to date.
So my question is just really to jump onto what John said, it's similar questions to what he asked, but how many linear feet was completed under the last contract, and for what amount was spent?
We had no, we spent very minimal money under the last contract. We really did no success deposits under the last contract, unfortunately.
So minimum was $10,000?
The only money we spent was the TV inspection and then utilizing it for cleaning. Basically, that we utilized it to not run.
Dan, when they went to try to reline the first pipe, they stuck the scope in, got 10 feet, and they found a line collapsed. So they went in the other direction, figured maybe they could go that way, and they went 10 feet and found a line collapsed. So as you, as you well know, you can't, in a collapsed line, you can't run it down.
Yeah, exactly why I was asking the question, is it's great technology, but living in a community that's built on sand, and the likelihood typically when a sewer line is broken, that you lay collapsed pipe.
Correct.
This technology pretty much all worked out, so the reason I was asking the question is if we spent, you know, $130,000 last time we got zero pipes done, maybe it's not the best solution this time around.
Yeah, I think the point was we didn't really get to use it because we didn't have, everything we tried to do with it was a collapsed pipe.
Exactly, that's why I was asking what we spent on it, just to make sure. If we could have $5,000 to try it after the foundation.
Correct. The only charge is basically to put the scope in to find out the line is collapsed.
And you'll find that most of the time in a sewer pipe.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public? Ms. Boyd, Legislative Board?
Thank you. You can call me Denise, Denise Boyd, one each, New York. Thank you, Karen. But my question then would be, with this liner, when you put it in, will it strengthen the pipe? You say that, you know, like if the sewer line is not collapsed, and now you put this sleeve, whatever it is, will that strengthen the pipe that it appears to, so that we can avoid future collapses?
Absolutely, it's just as good as a direct replacement.
Any other questions from the public? Okay, thank you.
I introduce the Resolution authorizing the City Manager to purchase lifeguard stands for the sole bidders.
Hello, Commissioner.
I think by default, I'll take this one. Okay. This is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to purchase 24 lifeguard stands for the Ocean Beach Bar. Two bids were received in the office of purchasing on Thursday, March 10th, 2022. The low bidder was Taj DeMiko, a fine line designer, it costs $2,500 each, so for 24 units, it's $60,000. The second bidder was Holsberg, Communications at $3,994, now at $95,000, et cetera. Funding is being derived from the $300,000 that was donated by John Akar Dona, charitable, it was a charitable donation. Just to add, we had some questions from the council regarding this bid about the material that's being utilized. I did share the spec with everyone, and it does say that it's hot dip galvanized, that we're utilizing. And if you did any research on that, you know, it's probably not the ideal material for a lifeguard stand, however, the alternatives to it, one, which would be stainless steel, quadruple price. Wood, I don't think it's preferred by the lifeguard, it's all pitch maintenance, because it splits, cracks, you move it, it's subject to the potential, the alternative to move. And other products such as aluminum, which we definitely wear very well, it's kind of soft material, it's not really good for misuse. So I saw, I was hoping to dip that in the bud, but if you have any questions, I have my Director of Operations here, Tom Canada, an assistant answering them, I have Chief of Lifeguard, Paul Rustings here, of course, I'll take any questions that you have.
Thank you for all those, answering all those questions last week from the council, I know it's a lot. It felt like that was the chemistry I killed the first time, so...
That's all, that's all we're for, so.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Lester, do you have a question?
Yes. Joe, what is the warranty on it?
That's a great question. We do not have the answer to that. Tom, is there a warranty on it? I didn't see that in specification files, I didn't notice that.
I can answer. Right now, in the review, I believe the warranty was one year. The last time we did this, we had contacted the vendor directly, when we were coming in the morning, the vendor was open to a two-year warranty on that. If you do the same thing, it's a word this time.
A two-year?
That's what I can ask.
But these are expected to last 20, right?
Yeah, well, I think again, more, Tom, we can stop, we'll speak to the vendor, but they, from what I understand, the car once has lasted at least 20 years, and they do...
Well, it's been there close to 40 years.
Oh, there you go. And they do maintenance, I think it's around the passage for lifeguards.
We have to rebuild them over and over, year after year after year, so it's time now, after 40 years, we have the chair.
Any other questions from the council?
None.
Well, when you say you have to rebuild it, what part do you have to rebuild?
Some of the metal, the metal on the...
It is chair.
They deteriorate, the salt, between the salt water, the salt air, you know, everything, that corrodes them, we have to sometimes put new pieces in.
And right now, the metal that they made with the, is what, it's not hot dip galvanized?
Uh, yeah, they have that.
I'm sorry, what?
The ones we have on the beach now.
Yeah. They're just...
I guess, Tom, you know the debate of the ones on the beach?
Yes, the ones that we have right now are hot dip galvanized, and like Chief Lester said, they've been there for over 40 years. We have another added step with the maintenance. At the end of the year, the lifeguard do a great job, they take and they sand them down, and then they repaint them with like a rust oil, and they put two coats of paint on it so it belongs to life. It's a proven material, like Commissioner Prizzi was saying, if you live here, you know how the conditions are in the beach, the salt air, water, it corrodes everything. Even stainless steel will eventually start to rust, it'll probably be twice as long. Aluminum's the only proven thing that doesn't rust, is the soft material, we crush it when we move it. The chairs that we did now is, as everybody knows, the old chairs were about 16 feet tall. We used to place them and then bury them, so if we had to move them, which we do quite often with the high tide, storms coming in, we had to dig the whole thing out. So it's four machines, you know, four operators, you could take up to five days to do it. What we're doing now, new chairs, they're only eight feet. So what we'll do is build them up first, put the chairs on top, and then bury them. So it's enough that it's safe, it's not going to pop over, there's no, you can't bend your vice and pull it out. But if we have to move them, which we will, we'll be able to, we have just four pick points to it. So we'll be able to have, we have a chain with piece equipment, we can roll up, dig out, very easily, you can do it by hand if you have to. Hook it up, pull it off, put it in the dome, it picks. Two machines probably six hours to do it all.
Okay, so the lifeguards can do it if they need to?
They would need our assistance, but yes, if they had to, dig it out by hand and carry it, they could, but with our assistance, you know...
What do they, what does one of them weigh?
Um, I don't know exactly, but I would say probably maybe 300 pounds, 450 pounds.
Okay, and they also, they have the wood seat though, right?
That's correct.
But you, one of the reasons that you, you were talking about wood, is you said the wood cracks and splinters. That won't happen to the seat?
It does happen to the seat, and the lifeguards have the long maintenance staff, they'll replace it, but more importantly, the frame, if one starts to pick it up, you know, the frame buckle, that's what we're more concerned about with using wood.
Because almost everyone else uses wood, you know?
And that's just white for metal.
Good. Okay. And listening, how, we're ordering 25 of them. I assume we're not getting 25 all at once?
No, the process is, I mean, if we did it with the first bid, we would, we would still be working with the consultant. If we, the one who's bid tonight, I know, I know Taj, she was a lifeguard, he actually sat on the chair, so it's a plus, he's got a rig shot right here in Long Beach. We're going to work it out with him, he's going to do four at a time. So what we're going to do now is we're going to take all the old chairs, we're going to cut them down to eight feet, we're going to bury them the same way we are the new chairs. He'll have, he'll build the chairs, he'll send them out, they're hot dip galvanized, they'll come back, lifeguards will paint them, they'll be delivered to the beach. We'll have to do it early in the morning, we'll take four out, put four in. So I would say roughly right in the middle of summer, we should be done with all of them.
So when he said that it's going to take between 12 and 16 weeks, he was talking about the entire job, not just starting the chairs?
Yes. I guess maybe so, yes.
By the end of the summer, like every chair will be replaced?
Absolutely, probably before, but as you know, with the material, you know, the waves coming in, you know, everything's COVID four.
It's COVID, it's everywhere, remember?
Everybody's given the absolute worst-case scenario. Everything we do, everybody's given the worst possible case scenario just to cover it all.
Okay.
And the last thing we have to about to repair is our city garage, we have welders there, we have people in sanitation, we have people in beach maintenance that all take welding classes, so anything that bends or breaks or if it becomes, you know, too rusty, we can take it right to the garage, we have the material in stock, and we repair ourselves in-house.
So we won't have a problem with this, I mean, you know, the lifeguards aren't going to be stuck with something that's not functioning, yet the beach maintenance can take care of it.
100%, well, I'll learn, exactly. You wouldn't even know if you didn't see us replacing the chairs, you'd never know.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
As a point of information, it's 24 chairs, not 25. Anyone else still have a question? Anyone from the public? Ms. Egan? Thanks. Nobody get, instead, like, are you going to dump the chairs, like the ones that are there? Is there anything we could do to repurpose them?
It's not really...
Can I have one?
It doesn't have to be, they're traded by, it's a old metal, you know, plus, we'll take them and put them into water recycle, they'll recycle it wherever you want them.
Well, could you, like, maybe, like, just make something like pretty on the streets or from behind the buildings, is there any way you could, like, put a shower pot or something into it?
You don't, you don't, my girlfriend told me I'm not allowed to pick colors in a house, you don't want to touch me.
Just instead of just don't be, is there any repurpose that we could?
No, but if you wanted to do something like that, I'm sure we could give a chair to accommodate, you know?
Sell them.
I'm not doing that.
Mr. Cartman?
Jim, you mentioned everything except fiberglass, and I know fiberglass is pretty much impermeable as far as salt air goes, it's going to be formed in anything, be recolored, so you don't have to constantly paint them, maintain them, you can even create seats out of fiberglass, so that you make it entirely, you know, one piece unit. Is there any reason why you can't do it in fiberglass, or is it just more expensive?
We would use fiberglass, because like I said, when we move them with the machines, it's, it would buckle, yeah, it's definitely too fragile, and the sun beating on it, we all know what happens eventually, you know, yeah, and it gets splintered.
Okay, just curious.
Yep, no surprise.
Any other questions from the public? Okay, no questions.
And the last thing, I'm sorry, we, Mr. DeMiko is going to do free of charge, he's going to put, every lifeguard stand has a number on it, he's going to put the number on it, he's going to weld it in, and he's going to do it like a nice hardware, and he's also going to put the name of the street on the back of the lifeguard stand.
Can't wait to see him. Thank you. Thank you.
Ninety-four is a resolution authorizing all the state's AM fund. Okay, good evening, everyone. Rich Barres, Corporation Council, so as the resolution indicates, the aid incentives for municipal programs is basically a form of state aid that's granted to all New York cities except the New York City proper, 141 towns and villages. Aid funding is basically used for municipal services like water, sewer, public works, police, fire, and ambulance for cities and villages all across the state. Problem with it is, is that the state has not increased AM funding for about 13 years, and inflation, as you can see in the resolution, has eroded AM funding by about 29% over that time period. I took a look at the website, the AM funding that the City of Long Beach has received over the last three years has stagnated at 3.152 million approximately. NICO, which is the New York State Conference of Payers, it's 400 members of almost every municipality around the state, sent out a letter a little bit earlier last month to the City Manager who signed on urging Governor Hopel to request an inflationary increase in AM funding. Right now, the executive motion hasn't been officially passed yet, so this is in further support of that request to increase AM funding.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Thank you.
And five is a resolution authorizing annual allocation of community development funds for the 46th program year.
What this is, is that it's just to approve the annual allocation or the annual grant for the 46th year. As we were trying to make some amendments to the, to the grant, if you look at it, it's like $130,000 for MLK Community Center Improvement, we realized because of the changing of staff that the original 46th year program year had not been approved. You did approve the grant when it was applied for, but you had not approved for us to do the expense line items. So this is just completely our paperwork. In the future, CDVG grants are applied for differently, the council has to give us approval to apply for the grant, so in the future, when the resolution will say that you are giving us permission to apply for the grant, and if the grant is received, we can go ahead and do the account numbers, so we don't have to come back just to get an approval to do account numbers.
My question regarding the sudden is that we're, we're in several years now of the CDVG program, and some deadlines are coming up, like in August 2022, on certain years for certain pay board. To make sure that the council adheres to its fiduciary responsibility and doesn't let this get away with us, could we see some, like, quarterly reporting on CDVG funds going forward? Thank you. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public?
And six is a resolution authorizing transfer funds for the 21, 22 fiscal year. Can you hear me again? This is a resolution authorizing a transfer of funds from the contingency line to the central garage, we do have a gas and diesel fuel line in the amount of $95,000. There was $400,000 budget for fuel and diesel, diesel and gas, I'm sorry, for this year, probably that line is exhausted, there's no money left in the line. The intent of this resolution is to reimburse the central garage, we have a gas and diesel line, the fuels is associated with the temporary ICU that was utilized in July of August of last year. It's estimated that that two-month period, they use several gallons per day, times 15 days, times two, when they're down, to $94,570. So basically, that's basically the intent of this resolution. It's not addressing the overall fuel usage for the rest of the year, based on questions I've had from the council, that we wanted to, various members wanted to know, how much would we need to get through the rest of the year? I estimated approximately $200,000 to close out the year. I can't speak for the city in control, but my, my guess is that to amend a few budget transfers, that would be addressed probably in a month or so. If not, we're going to have a similar resolution in a month or so for the remaining one. But this was just to address... But this was just to address the fuel usage for the backup of an AC unit in July of last year. Any questions?
Yeah, yeah, true. This was a five hundred kilowatt generator?
I don't remember what the kilowatts for the generator was.
Because the best resolution that was passed was five hundred.
It was the natural.
I'm just looking at the, I have paperwork.
The natural, you're correct. That's the generator that we paid for, but when the generator went down, no fault of ours, they had supplies of no generator. So the only one that they had was the bigger generator, so they brought it down.
And did, what's it running twenty-four seven?
Yes, sir.
How come it was just with the air conditioning though, correct?
Yes.
And we kept the air conditioning on twenty-four seven?
In some ways, sir. Because if we turn it off at nighttime and we let the building get warm, the condensation is incredible and it takes too much time for the building to run back up. Now, we don't have the air conditioning blasting when there's no one in the building. You know, we turn it way down, but it does run all the time.
And that'll be the same with the new air conditioning?
Yes, any of our buildings, when they, when we're required to turn the air conditioning on, it stays on all the time. It's the same thing like in your house, if you set the thermostat for whatever, you're calling it like sixty-five, it, it'll go back on, obviously, thermostat. So the generator, it was on twenty-four hours a day, but it wasn't running at full capacity twenty-four hours a day.
Okay, and we don't use any type of dehumidifier, sorry?
No, some of the systems, newer systems have a dehumidifier in it, but this building is not.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the public? No questions.
Item seven is a resolution authorizing the extension of the letter of intent between the city of Long Beach and the city of Long Island LLC. Good evening, everyone. As the resolution indicates, or as just everyone's reference, back in December, towards the end of December of last year, we reached a letter of intent with the Havenman parties in that decades-long litigation. That letter of intent set forth some key terms, right, a seventy-five million dollar payment, it's a zoning relief, and a ninety-day period in which the parties had to negotiate a formal settlement, kind of integrating all of these key terms. Those ninety days have come and gone, but the parties have been at the table negotiating this entire time. What this resolution does is allow me to sign the letter of extension, allow us to negotiate at least for up to another sixty days, with the goal, the target, of finalizing and completing this formal settlement agreement.
Any questions from the council on this side? Any questions from the public?
And just, sorry, just for everyone's preference, I mentioned it. The extension of the, of this, this letter of intent still stays all the interest accruing on the judgment. The period that we negotiate, that we're done, there's no interest on the judgment.
Thank you.
Item nine is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter a agreement with grant consulting services with the lowest responsible company.
This resolution is to bring on Millennium Strategies. We have been talking to Millennium Strategies for about six, seven months. When we first reached out to them, their prices were significantly higher. We put this out to bid and they came in at the lowest bid. The purpose of this is that we only have part-time people working on grants. The city could, this company will pour thirty-six thousand dollars a year to go out, look for grants for us, write the grants, monitor the grants. We will still do some things in-house where we can, but it is really to put the professionals to get as much money for us as they possibly can. The staff, we have one staff person that really works part-time on grants. They will continue to work with Millennium, but we can also sign that part-time, well, the full-time person, give that person some additional duties, since Millennium will be coming in. This will be a win-win for the city. Their references show where they have brought in significant dollars in grants that we possibly in the city over the years didn't know about, or we were not able to get. And basically, we believe that Millennium will help us get more grants, bringing in more dollars into the city.
Thank you, city manager, again. I will just point out that unbeknownst to the council, because we stay out of the day-to-day business of the city, Councilman Bendo and I had actually met some of the principals from Millennium Strategies last September when we were up at NICOM with, with David Fraser, working on training. So it was nice to meet them and it was interesting to see the opportunities that we're not getting right now and that as the city becomes more sophisticated in terms of how we run the city and the challenge that we face and to really take on economic development. I'm really excited, excited about this opportunity to have a grant company on retaining. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public?
I'm sorry? Mr. Cartman?
Item number one, Long Beach, New York. I was just curious if this was, this organization only seeks out grants for municipal operations or other types as well?
Other types, such as what, like nonprofits?
Yeah, not, yeah.
I'm not sure, because I just look for municipal. But it's a question I can ask them when I talk to them and then I'll let you know.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay.
I know what you're thinking, Joe. I need a few bucks when I go to Coopers.
All right, now on to them. Item number two, resolution authorizing the city manager to enter a contract for on-call sewer payment services with the sole responsible bid. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilor Lester.
Yes.
Councilor Bendo.
Yes.
Vice President Trussler.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
Item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase lifeguard stands for the lowest responsible bid. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilor Lester.
Yes.
Councilor Bendo.
I just wanna say thank you, Joe. I know I drove you nuts with all my questions about carbonized steel and to the council, because I gave them an engineering class on galvanized steel, so, yes.
Vice President Trussler.
I know enough about galvanized steel. Bendo, I will, yes.
President McGinnis.
Hallelujah, yes.
Item four is a resolution authorizing for an increase in aid funding. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilor Lester.
Yes.
Councilor Bendo.
Yes.
Vice President Trussler.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
Item five is a resolution authorizing any more allocation of community development funds for a forty-six program year. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilor Lester.
Yes.
Councilor Bendo.
Yes.
Vice President Trussler.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
Item six is a resolution authorizing a transfer of funds for, excuse me, twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilor Lester.
Yes.
Councilor Bendo.
Yes.
Vice President Trussler.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
Item seven is a resolution authorizing the extension of a letter of intent between the city of Long Beach and the city of Long Island LLC. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilor Lester.
I'm standing.
Councilor Bendo.
Yes.
Vice President Trussler.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
Item eight is a resolution authorizing, excuse me, the city manager to enter a agreement for grant consulting services with the lowest responsible company. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilor Lester.
Yes.
Councilor Bendo.
Yes.
Vice President Trussler.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
City members, if you want the personnel report, you can follow that city clerk, we may motion close meeting.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilor Lester.
Yes.
Councilor Bendo.
Yes.
Vice President Trussler.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes.
Just to show advance, who's chilly? Okay, we're gonna start community welfare and Frances, please, bring out Frankie Wey.
Before I begin my remarks, would you just please sit in council, do what you can not to chill any dissent, conflict. I'm so happy that the finances look better. Proud of the city workers, I'm also proud of the citizens of Long Beach who have not abandoned Long Beach, who are buying in Long Beach, who give the province beautiful. We're not professional complainers. We don't get paid. It's the few recourse we have to the government. We're very happy with progress, but nothing to discourage us. I'm not here to complain tonight. Long Beachers have different opinions on the Empire Wind Project. Some say it's great that it knew all the energy, others say that it's cost effectiveness, it's a question of maintenance, effect on ocean wildlife and seaside aesthetics. They don't have a position on it, seems to be a done deal. But I want to propose what might be benefits, special, special benefits for the city of Long Beach. As we know, Ecuador, the surveyors completed the geotechnical survey, collected rock and soil samples to see where the cables to be laid to carry power from the future turbines to the electrical grid. That work, of course, is part of the Empire Wind Project. If Long Beach is providing easement of the cables under, over, or through this area, and if our shoreline will be affected in some part, Long Beach should put enough for a piece of the action. I see two possibilities. The city should pitch, aggressively pitch. An invitation to Empire Winds to locate administrative offices in Long Beach. To find an oceanfront location would give them an attractive location within eyesight, a telestopping sight of their own project. How great that would be for them, how great it would be for us, attracting engineers, architects, line in into our city. Second, the city should press, aggressively press, for significant easement fees. I understand that municipalities don't have underground rights, whatever they used to call it, uh, Isolem, island infernos, from the sky to the bottom. However, even with the permissive easement that we're subject to, I'm not sure what disruption would be afforded by laying or drilling the cables under Long Beach. There has to be some effects, inevitable or at least potentially. Look at what East Hampton has done. East Hampton is no, the town of East Hampton has negotiated twenty-eight million dollars for their part in the similar project out in Suffolk for the use of running on their beach.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Wey, thank you.
So in this council, would please consider either of those proposals.
Thank you very much. Michelle Knox.
All right, Michelle Knox, Long Beach. I was just curious to know if you have any information on the beach revenue from last beach season? Please don't say you don't.
We, we had a, we, we, we had a beach revenue presentation last Wednesday night and where we went over the twenty twenty-one beach revenue. That was not a city council meeting, though. It was a work session.
But so, did you give it the information to the rest of the people who didn't watch the work session?
It's on the YouTube channel.
Well, I may have seen a question in that.
No, I, I can read my slides.
Michelle, the presentation is up on, on the website, so we can point you to the link. But, no, but bottom line is, right now, the estimate is coming in a million dollars short on the budget.
One point one million dollar shortfall for the current fiscal year.
Got it.
Which the council has to figure out.
Judy Biden. Someone wanna give Judy a hand?
I need a laugh. John?
Yes.
Thank you, John. I really can't even tell you, well, to let you know, and we're not just one of them. We have a lot of things that are coming up that we'd like the city to know that, the council to know that, of course, to be invited to. One of the very first things that we were so excited to be doing, this is the first time since two thousand and nineteen, we were able to bring back our teen night out. That is an incredible, incredible, community-wide experience for all high school students who reside in the city of Long Beach. Not just Long Beach high school students, but parochial students as well. All this needed is an ID. It is entirely free to them. Evening, whether there's karaoke, there's food, but it's always made by incredible laborer, General Spurges, there's bubble supper that our administrative union from the school district is paying for, there's swimming that. Whatever, there is a lot, I'm gonna wait these lives for it and it's just good to be able to do this once again. We've always done it since two thousand and five, to be able to do it once again for the kids finally coming out of COVID, with certain life rates, throw together five hundred kids last year. In addition to that, one of the things we do for the community and in conjunction with the school district is we hold a series of workshops, really, called Active Parenting. They're evidence-based, they are not, thou shalt, whatever. It's, what it is is, kids do not know when instruction books. So let's all sit down and talk about it and figure out how to best do it. And so that's coming up on ten a.m. April twenty-ninth from seven to eleven. The next day, we are, you know, police department as well, under the DEA, is Take Back. Twelve day event is from ten to two, at City Hall. First time it was last October, they do twice a year.
I'm sorry, Judy, did you say the twenty-ninth is the twenty-first, it's Wednesday?
Teen Night Out is Friday night, the twenty-ninth. Take Back Day is Saturday the thirtieth. Our Active Parenting starts, it's an evening one, it's virtual, it starts on April twenty-fourth. And then we have the morning one that starts on April twenty-sixth, so an hour and a half, we provide the materials, lots of stuff. Also, I'm pleased to announce that we were the recipients of the grant from Oasis and eighteen thousand dollars of that will go towards, uh, for Mr. and $18,000 of that will go towards police patrol controls for underage drinking. The other thing, you may not know, and certainly the public may not know, is that we, since we began, and we refined it, refined it, is that we have a program where people, young people, say, you're no Jainer. Go to court, the court gives them the option of coming for a three, it's virtual again, a three week class. If they go back and write an essay, because that's what the court has decided the last two years is, Mr. Barrios, it is worth.
Okay, Judy, can you wrap it up, please?
Yes, I am, I'm done with this one.
Okay, thank you. Crystal Lake? Good evening.
Good evening.
Zeeby, I have some business.
Thank you. Good evening, Crystal Lake, Long Beach, New York.
I would just like to speak about the history, some history of Long Beach.
Crystal, I'll start, can you just pick up a little?
Sure. I would like to speak a little bit about the city of Long Beach, past, present, and future, and why I've been so passionate regarding many of my concerns or topics. Going back to North Park. Many have seen photos of the homes that no longer exist. But now I would like to put a face to that picture. I was one of the residents who lived on East Harrison Street, 50th, 60th Harrison Street, which that lot no longer exists. My great uncle, my uncle and great aunt purchased 50th, 60th Harrison Street, $51.91, 32, 33. My mother and father, Christina and Andrew Saul, lived there as well, as well as myself, my brother, my cousin Carl Marshall, who attended Long Beach High School, and upstairs, Skip Jeanette, mother Brittany lived there. So this is why I am extremely passionate. You see a copy of our certificate, which clearly shows my mother and father, and the physical and mailing address at 50th, 60th Harrison Street. The second page I obtained from the Library of Congress, a copy of a page from the White Pages, 1960, 61, which shows the address at 50th, 60th Harrison Street. I knew the number as 42779, it is clearly listed as 825779. So I just wanted to give some background, because there's been a lot of, I will say collateral damage, unfortunately, over the years. My uncle was a head chef who specialized in pastry, and drove to the drum and hat six or seven days ago. My father, Andrew Saul, received an honorable discharge, an honorable discharge from the United States Air Force. He was also known as one of the best transmissives veterans already. He owned Nats Transmission on Boston Boulevard in Oceanside. My mother was a nurse in Long Beach Hospital. So when people speak of the North Park, yes, I do have, while they're beginning to have a right to base this. However, moving forward, when grants are written, meetings are held, short and long-term strategies are implemented, please try to eliminate as much collateral damage as possible. Because I am one of the few still living residents of Harrison Street. I witnessed the pain, the destruction, the heart and gut wrenching pain that occurred for many families, because that area, some renters and a lot of us own homes. Regardless, renting versus homeownership, it's still someone's home, and it's a very extreme.
Thank you for sharing your story, Miss Lake.
Thank you, I can have a minute or so, I feel like we're doing one. Can I, will I be able to wrap it up with your permission? Yes. Thank you so much. So there has been many contributions from the North Park. Many unknown. So moving forward, every community has its foot in its bag. But there is many good, there's much good throughout the city of Long Beach. So please take that into consideration and eliminate as much collateral damage as possible. Thank you for your time, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, thank you. I think Heshin.
Good evening, all. Eileen Heshin, Long Beach. I wanted to mention something about the work session. I was out of town and didn't attend, but I did listen to it online. And Michelle, if you're interested, it was two and a half hours long. But the first thing I want to say is that anyone who's sitting in the seats here and has a response to any of the questions, you are not heard at home. You have to use the microphone if you want to be heard. So I hope people will do that. I also wanted to say that I am very grateful to the questions that are asked, because they are very often the same exact questions that I want to ask, and I want the answers to. So the more questions, the better. I mean, Mr. Bendo, you just apologized for driving everybody crazy with your questions. That's the important thing, ask the questions and get the answers. I also was happy at that session to hear the out-of-the-box thinking, and I hope some of those ideas will be implemented. I have two questions that came out of that meeting. The first one, you mentioned all the dollars about the beach passes. And I'm wondering if the free passes, I know there aren't too many of them, but if those prices are gonna be raised, or if those passes will be eliminated. And the second question I have is about the next work session, which is about the parking meters, which means that we don't have any input into that. So I'm not sure when the people will be able to talk about the parking meters. But so, 20 hours is a long time for sure to be up here, although it's important. But I think people get frustrated and maybe a little bit snippy, maybe a little bit snorky with each other as the time goes on. I like to live under the illusion that the people that are on the dais up here all get along and have respect for each other and are working together. Yeah, we all just get along, as that man once said. All right, that's it about the work session. And the other thing is, I see from the sign on the door outside that the bathroom has been repaired, and I'm delighted about that. I think we have something that we can be proud of, and I know that the city did it, so I don't think it was a huge expense, I know it's gonna be redone. But for now, I think it's in good shape, and that's very good. And with that, I'll just point Margaret Mead, who said, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has." And that's how our bathroom got done. Thank you very much. You can mention about the work session and when we can talk about parking meters, if you can.
Mr. McAllie?
Yeah, I would anticipate that this is the last work session of the council where, you know, we arrive at a general framework. The next time we'll come before the council would be to give the city manager the authority to negotiate and enter into a contract with the proposed vendor. And that would be the opportunity for, we will have a vendor there, we will have our consulting, and they'll do the full presentation, and again, we'll have opportunity for the public to weigh in on that one. And then also, then, the actual, that's just for hiring the vendor, the actual plan that will get implemented, even though it will be living and breathing for whole eternity, that, we'll still have another opportunity to talk about that, because we need to be able to implement a code that allows for the creation of a parking district. So the public will get at least two or three more bites of the apple at public work and at public meetings.
Thank you.
Mr. Barrios, you're very welcome, I think I almost said it.
Okay. Henrianna Stoff.
Thank you. Good evening, and you have a staff in Long Beach. I want to talk for this work session, and parking meters themselves, about its impacting public library. Our public library is one of the few in Nassau County that doesn't have its own parking lot. And what patrons use, and people are coming in, vendors, entertainers, whatever, uses diet streets. I understand the parking meters want to be in effect until 10:00 PM. So that's when you affect everybody, for example, in any way, for patrons to properly use the library, some of the sessions, and when we have debates at the public library, they go on for a couple of hours. And I think that this should be taken up, I think there should be free parking for patrons at the library, and if you talk to the library board, and I want to know, can the public talk at the work session next week?
So typically, when a work session, kind of immediate or public bodies, or even a public body, in certain instances, there is some public interaction for work sessions in particular. It's more of an opportunity for the public to get a bird's eye view of what the council's thinking when they're asking the questions. Like Mr. McAllie said, we're gonna have subsequent meetings and public hearings from the work instances relating to the contract itself. But there'll be an ample opportunity for public interaction, and they can ask all the questions to be there. Work sessions, unfortunately, are closed for public comment, just for the sake of experience, because as I think Heshin said, it's a two and a half hour meeting, just council, council question, so you compound that with, you know, the, it's a little time, time consuming. But we will have plenty of public opportunity for questions, as we roll this out.
Well, what I'll suggest to the city council is that we put this topic into that work session next week, because I think it's really important. As I said, Long Beach Public Library is one of the new libraries, I think, in Nassau and Suffolk, that does not have its own parking. And this really could affect its patrons and being published. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. McAllie?
I just know what I have been doing for the last couple of weeks. I've been doing my own personal roadshow with various restaurants, other businesses on Park Avenue that could be impacted by this. Libraries, unobvius, so I'll reach out to Tara, try and get together with her, if not before they leave, certainly before the work session. Because I do think that is, you know, of all of the uses up and down Park Avenue, that's a pretty unique one, that we want to make sure that, you know, there's something that allows us to facilitate, you know, public use. I mean, the idea for everything is, we don't want to impact usage anywhere, but libraries are a bit of a special case, I would think.
Thank you. Kathy Nolery?
Kathy Nolery, Long Beach. I want to talk about three different subjects now, so I don't need to ask. This is about parking. What I handed you is an article I wrote 11 years ago. It was a letter to the Long Beach Herald in favor of parking meters. And it's my own opinion, I'm not representing anyone. But everybody around us has parking meters. My memory goes back 40 years from Rockwell Center having parking. Maybe they had it longer than that, but I can, you know, I remember my little saying, they're on you like, the minute we record, they give you a ticket. But, you know, we have a perfect right to raise revenue here. And if I heard a rumor that they might bring in $6 million worth of revenue, and I'm thinking 11 years, that would be $66 million that we have missed out on during the 11 years that we've been studying, talking, and arguing about it. So in my opinion, you can't please everybody, okay? You need to try, do it, that's all I can say. You can't please everyone, everyone's gonna have a problem. But once it's done, people will get used to it. That's that subject. The other subject is, I'm a poll coordinator in the, for the elections, and I've been in this lobby several times, and recently. And with the planning for the OEM conference room and this room, I think it might be a subject to talk about, to see if we could maybe move the voting up here. It's ridiculous to have all of North Park voting in the lobby of a building. I've never been in another voting location where people are voting in a lobby. And Board of Election has taken the lights out of the, I don't know, the booths. So when the sun goes down, people can't see. And the quarters are so close that people are complaining that, hey, look who I voted for. So, you know, in this type of the, you know, climate, I don't think that you want that to happen. So it's just a suggestion with the designer, maybe then, and, you know, I don't think much has to be done, you know, you could just put the voting machines in two quarters, people could line up in the middle, it's not a huge change. And last thing I want to say, with the lifeguard chairs, I know that a generous donor stepped up to pay for them. Robert Donovan had a suggestion that, like, the chairs on the boardwalk, that we sell people with their names on them. And I think that's a, that's a good way for the city to make money. It's a good way to advertise businesses.
Thank you.
Kathy. The money that we did receive was exactly for that, to main rights of the building. So it is great.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Nori Egan, just, boy, you, leave it, just want to point something back. A few months back, the city manager and some of the council members who made several road trips out to municipalities on Long Island that had turned themselves around and redeveloped their downtowns and things like that. And we met with mayors and government officials and staff and things like that. And I think we went to, we went to Patchell, we went to Huntington, we went to Bay Shore, Blenko, Farmingdale. The one thing they all had in common is they all introduced parking meters. And they're all doing their downtowns on private.
Thank you.
Kathy, there are, there's some extra, would you like to back me up?
Don't have a problem.
I shall be silent.
Nori Egan, Long Beach. I apologize if some of this has been covered, but I was late because I've been used to the meeting starting late. So every council meeting, every working meeting, I'm inundated with texts and messages requesting that cancel, everybody in the, everybody in the audience use the microphone. So if you guys who was leading the meeting can do that, you do a mic check. With regards to the working meeting last week, I was watching it. You cannot see, and most of you, all of you have sat this side. When you have the screen, you can't see it. So if you could have the presentations, the card copies, and the presentation is not on the website, because I was checking this morning, but it would be helpful for people watching to follow along. And no offense to anybody, but the people answering the questions, they weren't prepared. And a lot of their answers was, I'll get back to you, I'll give you the answer tomorrow. So sitting watching it, I don't know what answer they gave you, and we're not hearing answers that was given. I was under the impression that the meeting would be discussed tonight, so that's that. I was under the impression that the, the meeting would be discussed tonight, so that's bad. I think I could use a little bit of notes, I'm missing the podium. Okay, so then also, the public notice for this meeting, again, don't shoot Messenger. On both Facebook and the website, it's reading as if you don't want people to come, like people can watch on the livestream, you're not inviting people back, you're not saying that it's in public. So if you could just redo that, then, you know, I'll just think that was for you. Thank you. Thank you.
Last one, that's Nate Epstein.
Hello, Nate Epstein, 200 Blackgate. Okay, well, first thing, um, as in regards to parking meters, um, I used to work as a bartender in Rockwell Center in a restaurant every day. And, you know, I'm sure the city is maybe doing well with those meters, but the $45 that would sometimes cost me could really ruin my entire day, so I think that's a point worth considering. Anyway, the real reason I'm here, you guys have some idea. Um, I'm going to speak a little more generally today, I didn't come up with a bunch of statistics. Um, I, I do believe that eventually this council will come around and vote to allow, um, recreational cannabis. Because I believe that every person up here is a sensible person who wants to do what's best for the city, who wants to make revenue, and because I believe that the arguments for are stronger than the arguments against. Um, I've heard people concerned about the message that you sent. I, I think we all know that allowing people to do something is not the same as saying that they should do it. Right? We're not here to say that everyone should smoke weed. We're here to say that every adult should, uh, should be able to, without being told they can, and should have access to the kind of information to make a sensible consumer choice. So that's generally the point that I came up here to make. And, um, you know, we, we embrace drugs as a community all the time, as a country. Alcohol is the most dangerous drug. It kills more people than any other drug combined. And I can't give you one medical benefit for alcohol, but we legalize it, why? Because we enjoy it, it's great. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I think if somebody wants to make a choice, uh, what to do with their body, um, they should be able to. And there should be opportunities around them for them to, you know, seek help with it. And that's generally all I'm going to add. And, uh, most importantly, I'm, I'm just curious, you know, what's, what's on each of your minds that is delaying the decision? Because whether or not you guys choose to come around, I just don't necessarily understand the delay. I, I just don't see any reason to be against it personally, but I'm curious what's on your mind. I don't know if you guys run that back and forth with your mother, but hopefully we can discuss that in the future.
Thank you, Nathan. Good night, everyone, that's it. Thank you.